Evening. Welcome to the regular city council meeting tonight on February 5th. First order of business will be the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Would you all stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Middleton?
Here.
Council President Henderson?
Here.
Council Grant?
Here.
Council Colson?
Here.
Council Butterfield?
Here.
Council Langer?
Here.
Council Clark?
Here.
Thank you.
On the consent agenda tonight, we have the approval of January 29th, 2013, city council meeting minutes.
I'll move consent.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. The first presentation tonight is the introduction of the police canine. And Cory?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna have Captain Daniel come up and then Cory will join him momentarily. Not just Cory.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. It's my pleasure to be here with you tonight to introduce our newest canine partner and asset to the city, Canine Irma. But I want to kind of get you a little more familiar with the process and what we've done thus far before I bring her in. And quite frankly, if I bring her in first, nobody will ever listen to me. The team, and you've kind of been through this once before, the team consists of Officer Cory Gentsch, who's a veteran of our police department. He has been our handler for about a year and a half now. And as I said before, he is a veteran police officer. In fact, he's the number one on seniority list currently on patrol. His partner is Canine Irma, and I'll get into greater detail here in just a minute about who Irma is, where she comes from, and all that. Of course, I'm Captain Mark Daniel. I have 23 years of police canine experience. I am currently one of the state trainers with the Oregon Police Canine Association. I certify police dogs all over the state of Oregon. And I'm a former handler of two police dogs with the City of Salem Police. So Irma happens to be a Belgian Malinois. She's a small brown dog. She weighs about 40-some pounds, as opposed to a German Shepherd, which is a lot bigger. Belgian Malinois were bred in Europe to protect kingdoms and the castles. So that's basically where they come from. Very apropos for Sherwood, perhaps. Irma is three years old. She is actually from Germany. A lot of Belgian Malinois come from Czechoslovakia or other Eastern Bloc-type countries. But we were fortunate enough to be able to get Irma, who originated from Germany. And as such, she was trained in the protection sport called Schutzen. And Schutzen is, just what I said, is a protection sport where they go through things such as protection, so that would be bite work, and garden and barkin', and a variety of different things. Tracking, so there are tracking titles associated with that, as well as going through obedience routines. So how much training is there? Well, when we selected Irma, we brought her back, and after initial bonding time, getting to know one another, Cory was able to go with Irma to the Washington County Canine School. And they together underwent 400 hours of initial canine training. It was very comprehensive, put on by the sheriff's office. I'm very proud to say that they did an awesome job, and we're definitely grateful for everything that they did for us. We have a great team, which is highly trained in obedience, searching, searching for articles, things that perhaps a suspect might drop or hide. She's trained to search for people, and she's also trained to protect Cory and the citizens of this community. Cory was trained basic handling skills, so he knows what to do. And he had to kind of change languages, because his previous dog, he spoke Czech to. This one, he speaks German. It's not a really wide-range vocabulary. It's only about 40 words, but it's still a significant change, particularly when you're training for that, perhaps that time where you're gonna be really under significant pressure and you need to make a split-second decision. So it really is a significant transition from one language to the other. Cory and Irma undergo training continuously, daily and weekly. One of the things that we like to say is every time the dog and the handler get out of the car, it's a training day. It's a training time. So there's training that occurs every single time both of them get out of the car. And they are also certified with the Oregon Police Canine Association annually. However, we'll probably end up taking that certification level several times throughout the year, just to verify we are where we need to be. And those are minimum standards. I do not give those. Those are performed by another trainer from another jurisdiction here in Oregon. So what Irma will do for Sherwood, well, she's gonna track suspects, people who run away from the police, people who run away from burglary scenes, from prowls to vehicles, from just about anywhere, somebody who's running away and attempting to hide. She's gonna be able to search open areas, so any fenced areas, yards, perhaps even some of our parks, for somebody who might be concealed behind a tree or under a bush, something like that. I mentioned article searches once before, and Irma has an extreme knack for searching for articles and finding things that we normally wouldn't see. When she graduated from the Washington County Canine Academy, it should be quoted that Irma was money, because Irma is just an absolute phenomenal dog as far as searching for articles. I can let Cory tell you a little bit of a story, but even before they graduated from the Canine Academy, they deployed on a call, an actual police service call, in Hillsborough, and recovered a knife that was used in an assault there in Hillsborough. So she's already located evidence. She's located a variety of different things already in her very short career. She's trained to protect our officers, both in actual physical protection, but also there's kind of a deterrent that goes along with having a police service animal in our community. Most folks who are bad guys don't want to have anything to do with a police service animal. They certainly don't want to get bit. And neither does a lot of other people. And as such, we have that ability to use a little bit of a psychological effect to protect our officers, but also to protect our public. As I mentioned, she can locate suspects who are fleeing, hiding, that type of thing, but she can also capture them using her mouth. She's trained to grab a hold of people and hold on to them until told to release. And I hope that we don't have to use that very often. I hope that visual deterrent and that psychological deterrent actually works better. We, after all, have her for her nose, and not for really anything else. Because if you can't find the bad guys, then it's not really worth having that extra tool with us. And of course, to deter crime, both psychologically and just physically. I can speak anecdotally from my experiences as a dog handler in Salem. Anytime I worked a district and I had my dog, property crime in particular, dropped dramatically. And once again, I think you can attribute that to the psychological effect of having that extra resource available in the community as a deterrent. So how can the public and everybody here help? Well, number one, this is a working animal, after all, and they get really protective of their cars, and so they can become kind of distracted, that type of thing. So if you see a police canine car, whether it's ours or perhaps from another community, and after all, there are a number of canine officers that live here in our community from other jurisdictions, you might want to stay away from the car. Sometimes the dogs actually like to play a little game, and it's wait in the car and see how close they'll get before they jump up and bark, and watch the person jump away. That happened to me a lot of times when I was a dog handler. When the canine is out working, actually out in the field, to keep away and stay back out of the area, inasmuch as they're cute and cuddly, and you'd love to run up and pet them and say hello, we kind of need to let them focus on what it is that their job is, and that's to focus on finding bad guys. If they happen to be searching your neighborhood or in an area of the city, and you happen to come out of your home and see them or out of your business, go back into your home, go back in your business. Because when the canine is working around you, it's very easy for them to become distracted. Also, when a canine happens to be out working, it would be good to report any suspicious people or vehicles that you might see in the area when the canine is working, as somebody actually might be moving from one place of hiding to another. And of course, we're working, we're very focused on where the dog is and what the dog is actually showing us through body language, so we might not actually see that happening. So we might be able to save a little bit of time if somebody sees a bad guy move from one area of hiding or is attempting to flee further by picking up that phone and dialing 911 and letting us know on the radio. The other thing, I guess lastly, I'll say is remember Irma is not a pet. She is a working dog. Although she goes home with Officer Gentsch every night and lives there with his family and is inside and outside the house and that whole thing, when she's at work, she's all about business. And we need to really try and stay focused in that respect. She's also very, very social. And so it's an interesting balancing act between making sure that she stays sharp and focused as a working animal, as opposed to getting really comfortable as a pet. So those are just some of the things to think about. So without any further ado, we already heard her barking in the workroom, so I'll bring her out.
Captain, before you do, just real quick, I'll do this now. As you know, Mayor, members of council, we have the pleasure of swearing in our police officers when we hire them. And so that would look different, obviously, and I'm not sure Irma would be able to recite the oath. So, but we do have a badge for her, and it's important that, not only symbolically that she's a member of the city's team, but also that others know that she is, in fact, a working police animal. She carries specific protection as such under state statute. So I'm gonna go ahead and give this to Captain Daniel now, and we'll let Cory put it on her when we get her in here.
One of the things that I didn't mention, and as you saw her come in and begin to put her nose to the floor, she is truly interested in everything to do with her nose. We are very fortunate, and we have not focused on this as of yet, but Irma came to us as a fully certified California post-certified narcotics detection dog. So she has already imprinted and has been certified in California as a narcotics detection dog. So she's actually been certified in California that way, and here in Oregon as a patrol dog. So as Cory and Irma begin to really cement their relationship, cement their training, and get really accustomed to what they're supposed to be doing as a patrol team, we'll examine moving on and getting Cory certified with Irma as a narcotics detection dog as well. So with that, if you have any questions, I'm sure Cory and Irma maybe will be happy to answer.
Sorry, if I sit, she gets excited because she thinks that we're gonna play. So can I stand so she can stay still?
Please stand. She loves you.
Thank you. Yes.
Well, yeah, she's bonded.
She's awesome.
Mayor?
Oh, go ahead.
These are, I guess more, I have some general questions. I was just thinking about your presentation. So obviously, when will the canine unit be on? I mean, how do you figure out the schedule, the best schedule for a canine unit? Because crime happens, you know, all the time. And so I'm just thinking out loud. And then, secondly, we have such a unique community. We have, you know, we have a highway going through our communities, we have a lot of people coming and going, and then we also have a very pedestrian-friendly Old Town, you know, blocks of Old Town. And so I'm wondering how you work this asset into, you know, needs that could arise at 2:00 a.m. in the morning, or, you know, noon on a Monday, or, and then versus how we can introduce the dog to the public, given that we have such a unique mix of, you know, high traffic volume, and then we have this very unique Old Town. So that was just my general question.
Well, I'll try and just address the scheduling first.
Sure.
And really, the first look that I have to look at is training. Cory and Irma have got to undergo constant maintenance training.
Right.
So that looks like a minimum of 16 hours a month. And the best thing to be able to do that, to at least accomplish that task, is to partner up with other agencies. So since Cory has attended the Washington County Canine School, it's been important for us to try and get him on a schedule that he can continue to attend weekly maintenance trainings with them, and also with other agencies. And to get the most bang for our buck, truly, swing shift generally works the best.
Okay.
There are a number of canine units here in Washington County, but Cory can tell you from even personal experience that he's found that he's the only dog on in the county at times. Washington County, through the dispatch center, we have a very elaborate paging system for making sure that we get the closest canine unit, closest canine officer to the call. And it really is just like our automatic vehicle locating, but it really doesn't matter what color the car, what color the uniform, we get the closest asset to the public as quickly as possible.
So that's how we share that asset?
Yes. So that kind of takes care of the scheduling, and that, as far as the rest, it's just a matter of really getting both Irma, Cory, and everybody accustomed to one another through training, through experience, just through those opportunities. And we take it slow, and we really build on the building block theory, that we start slow, and once we get at one level, we moved up to the next. So it's all a matter of speed, based on Irma's ability to react and work well with everybody else, as well as Officer Gentsch. So there's a comfort level there. There's certainly liability concern to make sure that we're doing the right thing, and it's predictable, and we can control it the best way that we can.
Yeah, I don't think reaction's gonna be a problem for her. She's very attentive. So thank you.
You're welcome.
If a random town, unlike ours, that did not have the outside charitable donor that we've had for the animal, just wanted to go out and buy a dog like this, what would the upfront cost? I understand we have our own cost associated with training, but what would it cost for a town to go and procure a dog like this?
Just to procure the dog itself, $10,000. And then you just start adding on for everything else.
Sure.
But, you know, to get us to kind of where we're at now, if Cory was starting actually brand-new, we'd probably be somewhere up around probably $20,000. But we made some really smart decisions along the way with equipment, with the car, with everything that we've done so far. So we've really put the city in a great spot.
Thank you.
Got a couple of questions. I see a unique-looking collar on Irma's neck there, and I'm wondering what kind of unique equipment she might have.
Well, you can talk for that. Talking about the black collar, that's...
Yeah.
That is an electronic collar? Hey. I'm not going yet. It's used for a couple of different reasons. One, obviously for training and obedience, but primarily, that is for long-distance leash. So if I send her, if I need to send her out into an open area or forest area where it's off-leash, I'm not gonna send her out with a 50-foot leash and have it get tangled. If there's a situation where I need her to go out and search on her own without me right there for officer's safety, I can send her out and do that. The collar is there for, is if she might be going out towards traffic, I can put her on a down, or I can recall her to me. So that way, it's safer for us, and it's safer for her as well.
And with regard to her California certification for narcotics, until she's certified up here in Oregon, what can she be used for any of that at all? Or what happens if she strikes on something? How's that work?
Well, not officially.
Okay.
We won't put her in that, in her or the city's side for that just yet. However, maybe Cory can share a little bit about just some experience that she's had. She's already just kind of stumbled on some stuff, like out in Bill's van.
Yeah, we've kind of done some test runs with her, just to see, you know, because once they have the scent in their head, they still have the scent. So our evidence guy came in one time, he had just collected a bunch of marijuana from another case. And he came in and said, hey, wanna run Irma around the van and see if she alerts? I'm like, yeah, great idea, wanna see if she does that. So I ran her around the van, and her head snapped over to the side panel door, and she was biting and scratching at the door handle, wanting to open this door. So I said, it's probably right behind where she was scratching it. Sure enough, he opens the door and is sitting right there.
That's neat. Great. Thank you.
So how do you, how do you train an animal to find a weapon?
Well, anything that has human scent on it is what she's going to alert on. So if I, I mean, anybody holding a pen or a water bottle, if you were to go out there and throw it out in the outside right now, and I send her out on the search, she can't really see real well for an actual object. She's using her nose to search. And once she smells that human scent on it, she will stop and down, and then, for me, that's, I know, that's a sign that she found something. So it's not particularly the article, per se, it's the scent that was left behind on that article.
And then, how do you, how do you acclimate a dog like this into your own family?
Yeah, each dog is different. She doesn't spend 24/7 in the house. Every once in a while, I'll have her come in and socialize with the family. She's pretty good at that. She just wants to be petted. In fact, my youngest, my six-year-old, and her get along really well. She'll come up and roll over on her back and be petted. So it's not, it's not a continual thing, but it's a process, and every once in a while, like I said, she'll get the interaction with the family, just so, you know, she knows that, hey, it's not just me and her all the time, there's other people out here, and she needs to be used to being around other people.
Has she met the chief?
Yes, she has. Day one, she did.
Good thing.
How old is she?
She's three years old. She turned three in October.
She's still so excited.
Yes.
Lots of...
It's the drive that the mouths have. There's so, there's so much hyper, more hyper.
So how much training would we have to give the dog to make it certified for drugs in this area? Because that's kind of a concern a lot of citizens have, especially around the schools.
Mr. Mayor, I think it would be a very short period of time.
Since she is certified in another state?
Yes. It's just more getting Cory acclimated to the dope work and being able to reward her for the proper alert, and then going through the standards.
He should probably learn it. He was, he's a pretty good officer since I hired him, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
I have one more question.
So Chief, how does this impact your budget? Does it help? Does it, I know we had a donor for the dog, but the overall cost, how does that impact you? Because I know citizens have asked me.
Sure. So we chose a vendor that was not only highly respected and very reputable internationally, but certainly within the domestic canine world. But our vendor also had a guarantee. So when we selected our first dog and ultimately determined that it was not the right fit for us, that guarantee was there. And the first phone call I made, the gentleman's name is Dave Reaver, and the first words he said were, you know, Chief, you have a full guarantee, and we're not happy unless you're happy. So everything that we had invested up to that point, and as Captain Daniel pointed out, including the vehicle, including the equipment, and a lot of very strategic decisions we made about what we were gonna purchase and how we were gonna purchase it, everything really rolled over. So the only additional impact in terms of finances, quite frankly, was about $290-some, I think. The three of us went to California. I felt it was important for me to be a part of this process this time. So I did, in fact, meet Irma from the very beginning, and intentionally did not spend much time with her, but did get to play with her a little bit. She is just an amazing dog. But we just made a marathon trip down there and were able to bring her back and, for the amount I told you. So really, that's the only cost in making this transition. I think we had a very minor registration fee for the county, if anything. We have tremendous partners in Washington County, and so the class was something that they needed to do, and they opened it up to us, and so we were able to participate. So, I mean, I can't say there's been no impact, but very, very small impact, because everything rolled over.
She's awesome.
Your point earlier, Captain Daniel, about if the dog was in here before, we would have not paid attention. It's completely on target.
I did hear every word, Chief Grove.
I did. Yes. That's fine. The other thing I was gonna add is that Captain Daniel alluded to it, but I was, attended the graduation, and I can tell you that everybody that has been in contact with our team has had nothing but positive things to say and has been very impressed. And I just want to repeat that the lead trainer for the team, when he called up Cory, or the lead trainer for the class, when he called up Cory, said, and I quote, "This dog is money." And we saw that from day one. I have a, you know, 23-year canine veteran, and the first time he took Irma out and worked her down in California, gave her back to the kennel handler, came out to where Cory and I were watching, and said, "That is a push-button dog," meaning it is dialed in and ready to go. And that's exactly what she has continued to show. Now, she's also already, not only the find in Hillsborough, she's made a find here. We had some officers make a stop on an individual who chucked something small out. They called our team out, and she was right on it, and it turned out to be a little bindle of dope. Now, of course, she didn't know that. She scented to, as Cory explained, but that's what it turned out to be. So she's a great asset, and we look forward to letting more of the community see her at different venues, and maybe even do some controlled demonstrations so they can see how she works.
That's all we have. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Gene?
It's good to see that we're going to get started on fixing the streets downtown. The only concern is, is that one of the first things you notice, street being closed, railroad street, but there's no sign yet showing that the businesses are open and you're able to get to them. The other thing is, is that communications, kind of stepped back a little bit, because we went to one meeting, and the streets were gonna be done a certain way, and then the following week, it changed. And some of the people have been affected, some still have not been notified. So I know they're working on it, but we need to watch that closer. You need to get your signage up, because when you go by those streets, those little signs, you think, oh, God, I'm not gonna come down here. There's nothing there, encouraging people to say, hey, the businesses are there, we gotta keep, they're open, and directions on how do you get to them. So there is some concern about that. And I have one lady, an hairdresser in our Thursday and Fridays, she's got about 11 people that'll be using the handicap ramp. So her question is, you know, at what point can they not come in? She needs to know four or five weeks ahead of time, or not at the last moment, because if she knows ahead of time, she can reschedule or work on it. The other thing is, is that when they, those revenues are lost, they don't recapture them. So I know everyone's working hard, but just be aware of communications needs to be set up there, because I think what our Italian place is having a grand opening, and I believe it's gonna be almost in the middle of construction. Only good thing is, is maybe they're, do the sidewalks last, so maybe that venue is still open. But I know a lady from Cupcake Place said that she went over and advised him what was happening, where construction was starting. He wasn't aware of it yet. So you're doing a good job, but just work a little bit harder. Thank you.
Thank you, Gene. Is there any more citizen's comments out there who didn't fill out one of the forms that would like to talk? Okay, there's a little form.
I didn't see it across there.
Oh, that's okay. Oh, that's okay, just come up front and give your name and address.
Yeah, I have some handouts here. I brought four or five copies. Jeff Roberts, 21705 Southwest Wheat Place, Sherwood.
Give them to, right there, to our recorder, please. That's all right.
So, my name's Jeff Roberts, husband of Joan Roberts, father of Devin, Isabella, Sophie, and baby Hazel. Bella and Sophie are here as moral support tonight. My wife and I and family, we've lived in Sherwood for about nine years. Love it here, I grew up in Durham, so not too far away. Went to Tiger High. But while our family's here, we've grown, we've got, we're parents of four daughters, one dog, one cat, and if you want the cat, it's yours. Not a big cat fan. Though we're grateful for our current home, we've outgrown it, we are, now have the possibility to purchase a lot in Sherwood. It's located at 15373 Southwest Sunset Boulevard, it's the last lot of the three-lot partition from 2005. If you see the pictures in there, you can see its beautiful location, right there next to Snyder Park, it is a challenging lot to build on. The main challenge is getting onto the lot, and it's not only restricted in the space that we have to drive onto it, but because of how the lot is laid out, and us trying to maximize our yard for our family in private area, the front of the house would face sunset, and that makes the setbacks, as you know, 20 feet to the back setback. And if you look at the aerials and look at, I've just kind of sketched in some stuff, the 20-foot setback is something that is really tough to do, to get in there for a garage, and getting into the garage and out, and, and having an area for my kids to ride a bike, that's a pretty sloped hill. And there's a six-year-old next door, and then a, almost four and two on the house further up, so just kind of a flat area. So, to cut to the chase, we want to build a detached garage with an ADU above, accessory dwelling unit for mother-in-law or to rent or office, just options, and we'd like to reduce that area there on the setback to five feet. You'll see, second to last page, I have support of the neighbors just to the north, which is the person who would mostly be impacted, that's Lance and Tamara Dowdell. Anyway, so the neighbors support it. The main issue we have is the cost. I included the cost sheet on the last, if you look at the back, a variance of more than 20%. Julia, you can check me, you can confirm it. More than 20%, so 20% would be four feet, going from 20 feet down to 16, I'd like to go to five. So anything over 20% requires over $4,400. I can't pay that. I don't have that. Yes, we are saving for the house and all those other things, got to sell our house, but I am asking for a waiver of that, and we would pay for the standard mailing fees, which I believe I was quoted $260. Is that about right? Okay. And that's so, we'd still make the application, we'd still do the public hearing, we'd still get approval, staff support, those types of things, and have to pay for the mailings and things, but we're asking for a waiver of the, what would be $4,145. And that's it. Any questions?
Normally, we don't make decisions on public comment here.
Okay.
So we will have to get back with staff for information on that.
Okay.
Does anybody else have a comment? Counsel? No. So, thank you. We'll get back with you.
Thank you very much.
Is your information, contact information?
Let me leave, I'll leave you a card.
I'm going to make sure it'll hold you a...
Sure.
New business. An ordinance of 2013-001 of the City of Sherwood amending provisions of Sherwood Municipal Code, Chapter 8-20 relating to the definition of solid waste in franchise enforcement. Craig?
Thank you. A little background, in August of last year, we received a letter from Pride Disposal wanting to bring a definition of solid waste into more of really what's going on out there. And that was to add organic food waste, electronics-associated components, mattresses, junks, other waste, is really what they're looking at doing, changing that around. Really, it's a cleanup item. We also had a work session in November on this topic, as well as when we were going through it, we felt that the enforcement part needed to be updated with more current language, which gives the city manager a little more of a process, as well as if the city manager or the city doesn't come through, it also allows the franchisees to step in and deal with the issue. So that's really what we're looking to change in the ordinance. Mayor, you can open this up, legal said, for public comment, or you don't have to. So...
I'll go ahead and open it for public comment. Does anybody have any comment on it? Close the public comment. Counsel?
Go ahead.
So under, on the very last page, which is page 10 of our packet, you have liquidated damages, $500. Is that what you're proposing?
Yes. It matches up with other items, too. Yes, $500.
What do you mean, it matches up with other items?
Well, in the ordinance, there's other fines of 500 or 250 throughout the ordinance, not just for this, but when you look at our ordinance, right now, there's really nothing.
You mean, no monetary fine?
Right. You can see what, above the bold there, that's what our ordinance reads right now. It struck out, under eight, two zero, .130.
.130, yeah.
So really, how this works is if you have another non-franchisee in here, where we collect franchise fees from Pride, they're doing the work and charging people, and the city's not getting any franchise fees, they're not...
So obviously, that fine is, is supposed to be a deterrent.
Right.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead and call for a close, go ahead and call for a vote.
I need to move. Yeah, the mayor, Middleton, you need to ask for a...
Motion. Oh, motion.
Move and read caption, adopt, ordinance 2013-001.
A second.
Ordinance 2013-001, an ordinance of the City of Sherwood amending provisions of the Sherwood Municipal Code, Chapter 8.20 relating to the definition of solid waste and franchise enforcement. Counselor Clark?
Aye.
Counselor Langer?
Aye.
Counselor Butterfield?
Aye.
Counselor Folsom?
Aye.
Counselor Grant?
Aye.
Counselor President Henderson?
Aye.
Mayor Middleton?
Aye.
Thank you.
City manager report.
Mayor and counsel, I have a number of items, most of them are brief tonight. First, I'd like to have our library director, Pam North, come up and introduce one of our newest staff people to the council and to the community. So Pam, if you can come on up.
Good evening, mayor and council. It is my pleasure this evening, we don't get to do this very often, but my very good pleasure to introduce you to Tracy Malek. She is our new youth services librarian here at the City of Sherwood, dedicated to programming, outreach, readers advisory, reference for kids, all the things that go along with babies to 18-year-olds. Tracy comes to us from Scapoose Public Library, she's also served as a youth services librarian in Michigan and Louisiana, and she has her master's in library science from Wayne State University. And if you have any questions of Tracy, you may ask them now.
So since our youth services library area doesn't have doors, how do you, and, come again?
Are you asking me or Tracy?
It doesn't matter, one of you can answer. So, while I am thrilled to know that, you know, we've hired somebody who has a specialty in youth services, because clearly, we have a lot of kids in town. Will you have somebody in this position out there at a desk, or, you know, how do you best provide those services in the design of library that we have?
As you may have noticed, the information desk, which has been a large structure out there, and usually completely unmanned, we now have a PC out there. We, just this last week, we have installed a computer, and Tracy is going to be having regularly scheduled hours out there to be available to kids, families, homework help, the folks at the internet, and that's going to be a big part of Tracy's position.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
What was your last name?
Malick.
Malick?
Malick.
Okay.
Okay, you survived.
Thank you very much.
Great guy. Great for the council.
Thank you.
Just a reminder for the council and for the general public, your retreat is this coming Saturday morning, from 8 till noon. It's going to be at the community room at the Ridge's Campus, and you should have received an agenda late this afternoon from Sylvia, oh, it's coming, thank you, with some material. So, we're hoping it'll be a good retreat, and we'll get some good goals from you and some good direction from the council for the upcoming year. There are two letters of support that we wanted to inform the council of, and I'm going to let Julia, they're both kind of related to the same program, I'm going to let Julia start with one, and then Tom has another one to kind of go over with you. So Julia, can you go over the first one?
Sure. And actually, Tom's going to be talking about a letter of support, I'm talking about a letter of interest. The Metro Construction Excise Tax has been a tax that's been in place since 2006, and it's charged with new construction with the intent to help pay for planning activities within the Portland metro area to get land ready for development. The City of Sherwood received grants in the past to fund our Brookman Area Concept Plan, our Tonkin Area Concept Plan, and a small portion of our Area 48 Concept Plan. There's cycles for this grant, we didn't apply during the, the second round of grants, but they're gearing up for the third round of grants, and we are interested in submitting a couple of grant applications. The first step in the process is submitting a letter of interest, and one of the criteria for the letter of interest is for us basically to say that we've talked to our council about it, and they support us submitting the letter of interest. So I'm talking to you about it and asking for your support in submitting the letter of interest. Specifically, what we're considering asking for funds for is to do a concept plan for the urban reserve area west of Sherwood, not necessarily to bring it in immediately, but to identify kind of how that whole area could develop, and hopefully, a sequencing strategy, so that we can better advocate for bringing it in, not bringing it in, and how much land we might, think we might need over time as Metro considers urban growth boundary expansions. And the second one would be a master plan for the Tonkin Employment Area. We did get a, we did do a concept plan for the Tonkin Employment Area, and what we're thinking about is something a little bit more in-depth that will help identify specific strategies that may need to happen, and pieces that need to be in place to kind of help incentivize development and to get that in place. So those, those are the two that we're thinking about applying for. The next step after we do the letter of interest is we'll get feedback from Metro staff, as well as the screening committee on how to better, you know, kind of whether or not they think those are good candidate projects, and how to beef up the application. Interestingly, just as a side, I am actually on the screening committee, so I obviously won't be able to vote on our projects, but that will, it will be good insight into kind of what, what's going on throughout the whole region, so. And related to that, Tom wants to talk.
So before you, before you start, Tom, any serious questions or heartburn about us submitting a letter of interest at this point? I mean, it doesn't tie us to anything, it's just the beginning of the process, and I see lots of head nodding, so...
What's the timeline?
The timeline, the letter of interest is actually due in a couple of weeks, and we will, they'll, they'll have the screening, and then the next, the actual applications are due mid-April, and, sorry, I've got that. The funding, the grant awards would be June 2013.
All right, thank you.
So, along with that, and a lot of this was last minute, this came in actually just last Thursday as a request from, from the Port of Portland and Washington County, but it's related to the same grant cycle, Construction Excise Tax. But this is actually a number of jurisdictions getting together for an application in Washington County, and so rather than a letter of interest, which, which we prepare, this would be something that's going to be prepared by Washington County and the port, and they're looking for letters of support, since there's multiple jurisdictions involved, and they want to make sure that, that everybody is agreeing that they can make an application essentially on, on our behalf. So, that's a, just a technical difference between what that one is and this one. But this is actually, all of the large lot industrial lands in Washington County, there is actually 21 large lots in Washington County that are potentially eligible for industrial uses. So, the, these are large, large acreage, large lots. There's actually really only 15 in the entire metro region that are in what they call the Tier One or Tier Two classifications, and so there's very few large lot industrial lands available, and it's, it's a large concern, I think, from everyone, because you want to have a reasonable supply, so that different industries that might be considering coming in from other parts of the country or other parts of the world, who would need that type of acreage and those type of uses are, have an opportunity to be able to build their business and move forward. So, the, the goal is, is to try to get businesses to come in that are going to produce products that will be shipped around the country or around the world, and bring dollars back into the local Portland economy. So, there was an industrial needs analysis that was done, it identified a number of sites, and they do, and, and so what this effort is, is to do a more detailed investigation on particular sites, which is different than the master plan we're talking about, which kind of looks at the entire Tonkin Employment Area. This would look at just one individual site on the Tonkin Employment Area, which is the Biles property. The Biles property is, if you're kind of going up Oregon Street towards, to Alton Sherwood Road, there's a property on the right there, which has a sign for sale, it's been there for a long, long time. It's about 40 acres, and it's a, is a site that, that they want to get rid of or sell at some point. Previous effort on the ore site, which is a 90-acre parcel in the Tonkin Employment Area, was done a couple of years ago, and we got a lot of information about that site and what it needed in order to be able to develop. So, this is a cooperative effort. I think that there's probably going to be, only be about 10 sites that are considered, but this is something that would certainly add value to the site, certainly add understanding to our knowledge of what this needs from an economic and a timing and utility standpoint for what that site would need to be developed. But on the other hand, I think a master plan would probably serve our, our purposes more. So if we moved down this path and found out that we had a good chance of getting a master plan, we might pull out of this and just focus our efforts on that. So, I guess what I'm asking for is, just a head nod to say that you understand that, that we may be working together with other jurisdictions to get better information for this particular property, so how it can develop in the future in the Tonkin Employment Area.
I just have one question, it says $1,500 in support, isn't that $15,000?
Well, no.
Well, no. The, we, each site is about $15,000 total to study. They wanted some sort of a match. We'll be spending some time giving them information. We have some information from the concept planning that we effort, we did. That's just a guesstimate. And so, just with staff time and the effort that we put into it, it'd probably be about $1,500 is my guess, so.
Any questions? I think everybody's fine with it.
Mr. Mayor, did you have any comments on the letter that you saw earlier today? Because this one is...
No, no. I got the new one.
Okay. All right. I think we got what we needed. Thank you. The last thing I wanted to just inform the board, or not the board, I want to talk about the board, the council. I'm in my second year of a three-year term for the Board of Directors for the Oregon City County Management Association, which is the Oregon Professional Association. And I'm, was planning on leaving tonight to drive to Silver Falls, but I'm decided I'm going to stay in Sherwood and get up early and drive. But, I'll be down there tomorrow all day and then I'll be back midday on Thursday. We have a board retreat every spring to plan our activities for the coming year down at Silver Falls. So, I just wanted to let you know. I think I sent an email out. Mr. Pesamir is going to be acting city manager because I will be out of cell phone range. So, just to let you know. Any questions for me or department directors? Okay. Thank you.
Council announcements?
The only thing I had was just to remind businesses and citizens that the downtown streets, escape project will be starting tomorrow, railroad will be closed. I am a little concerned by Jean's comments that business owners did not know that. So, I'm wondering if it's a, potentially a business whose employee maybe didn't know that. But, I'm, I'm hoping that, you know, I think that that's the exception, not the rule, that people weren't knowledgeable about, you know, the streets being closed and what a challenging project this is going to be, but what a great road and sidewalk, you know, beautiful system we're going to have when they're done. So, that was all I had, was just a reminder.
Sure. Yeah, well, just real quickly, we do have a number of signs that have been produced and they'll be put out tomorrow that talk about businesses and how to access businesses and that businesses are open. And Jason sent me a text and said that he personally talked to that business, just teasing today. So, if they didn't have notice earlier today, they did by this evening.
Could we make sure also, I believe it's Keisha's Hair Salon, we need to find out because she does use a handicap access or they'll be right off of railroad, so make sure we, there's some sort of parking for the handicap citizens out there.
We'll make sure we make that contact.
Thank you. It's about it? Okay, we're going to adjourn.